Just Pat and Dick and Ralph. And just so those of you, I know you can sort of see, but I've been in your shoes and I know it's hard to see the audience. So just so, so you know that we have Jim and Mario and Dennis and Davies so far. And it is seven o'clock, so we'll start our meeting tonight, October 16th. All right. To begin with, we need to do a public hearing for the general assistance. This is something we have to do every year to just approve an ordinance, either our own ordinance or one that comes from the state. And we've been just approving the one that comes from the state because that's, it's pretty comprehensive, it's actually 110 pages. So we haven't printed out a copy, but we do have access to it if, if. Mario, would you sit over there? I'd like to see you and I keep having, every time I look at you, I see an owl step. Yes, you are. So that's why I want you to go over there. Exactly. Thank you, Mario. All right, so I just want to read the statement that we're going to, to hopefully agree on. Pursuant to 22 MRS, section 4305, one, the municipal officers of the municipality of Westport Island, after notice and hearing hereby enact the attached general assistance ordinance with appendices in its entirety. This ordinance shall supersede and replace all previous ordinance versions. A copy of this ordinance will be filed with the main department of health and human services, DHHS, pursuant to 22 MRS, section 4305, four, and shall be available for public inspection at the municipal office along with a copy of 22 MRS, chapter 100, 1,001, or 1161 probably is what it is, it's not a number. And I just want to say that they have updated a little bit this year and it has more definitions. But every year, the numbers change, the allowable expenses. And as, as is normal, they have changed again this year. And we abide by those and it goes by the county. So is there any comment from the town?
No question.
Um. Yeah. It's a thousand something per month for Lincoln County total. But it really depends, the food is one thing, there's food, there's electricity or fuel or rent. There are certain allowable expenses. And just to be really clear about GA, it is only for emergencies. It is not a monthly handout. It was not a monthly, like, you know, when DHS, HS supports people monthly. We don't do that for GA, this is an emergency.
And those people come to the board.
No, no, the board knows nothing about it normally. It would go to the general assistance administrator, which happens to be me. I don't have to share that with the board. In fact, it's recommended that I don't share it with the board. We do have a deputy general assistance administrator and that is Carol Norris. The two of us just went to a training a couple of weeks ago. And what's really nerve wracking is that almost everything that you learn about is that it's great areas. But so at least we have people that we can contact if there's any questions or whatnot. And a lot of support from the state. But it is a state funded issue. In fact, I just found out a couple of weeks ago that there are only 13 states in the entire union that have GA support. I thought it was a national thing, but it's not only 13 states provide it. So every, every town either has to provide GA or has to get support from another town to, to, that they would give the support if needed. But it is a requirement by the state that every town does. So any comments? Okay, then I'd like to sign. Yep, and I would second it, all in favor? I knew there was something I forgot. All right. All right, that ends the public hearing. Now to our regular board meeting. All right, I'd like to start with a warrants. And we have two weeks' worth of warrants today because we didn't meet last week. So we have payroll number 36, I'd like to move that we accept payroll 36 for $5,501.53. Do I have a second? All in favor? I'd like to move that we accept accounts payable number 37 for $18,921.15. Do I have a second? All in favor? And this one, 18,000 was more than we normally have to pay. And this was 8,000, about $8,000 for Sam. So chunk of that was just the same. All right, I'd like to move that we accept payroll number 38 for $1,886.97. Do I have a second? All in favor? And lastly, I'd like to make the motion that we accept payroll accounts payable number 39 for $83,639.85. Do I have a second? All in favor? Accounts payable. Yeah, I probably did call. Yeah, we decided to really up the, yeah. And yes, RSU is almost 80,000. So that's why that's pretty high. All right, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of October 2nd, 2023. Do I have a, so board meeting, do I have a second? All in favor? Yeah, okay. And next on our agenda is a conversation about the longer party consent agreement. And I know several of you are aware that we've been dealing with the long party issue for quite a while. And we've gone back and forth with this. I actually wanted to read to you, we, we've contacted our lawyer a couple of times. And he put together an administrative consent agreement that hopefully we'll agree with tonight. And basically, what he drafted, his comments are, it does not place blame on the CEO or the contractor. In fact, there's no blame anywhere. That would be something you'd have to go to court for. It does not mention the cost of the landscaping and does not assess good or bad faith of any party. It simply notes the property's location in large part within the shoreline zone and the select board's authority to enter into an administrative consent agreement that allows a building in violation to remain in place where its removal result in a substantial environmental damage. So if we ask them to move that, it would cause more of a problem. So we've all read it, we haven't talked about whether we agree with it or not, that's something to talk about now. And there are a whole lot of whereas, of course. And I won't read all of that, but basically I'll read you what we agree to. If we all sign this, the parties agree, the town complainant acting through its select board assesses a penalty of $2,500 for this violation to be paid by the applicants to the town of Westport Island at the time of the party's execution of this agreement. The applicant's respondents and the town, for themselves and for their successors and assigns, agree that the garage structure improvements made by the applicant in violation of the required setback from Lord Road may remain and be used and maintained, but shall not be expanded within this setback. That any replacement of the garage, garage structure shall comply with any then existing setbacks from Lord Road. And that the applicant shall not further violate the ordinance street setback requirements. Number three, the applicant shall agree not to contest or appeal the above assessed penalty and restrictions. Number four, the applicants for themselves and their successors and assigns and the town by and through its select board agree that they will be bound by this agreement. Five, the town enters into this agreement pursuant to this authority under section 14I3 of the ordinance because the select board finds that, quote, "The removal of the structure or use will result in a threat or hazard to public health and safety or will result in substantial environmental damage," end of quote. Number six, the parties understand and agree that this agreement is a fully integrated agreement and contains the entire agreement between them. This agreement supersedes any prior, any prior communications regarding the matters contained herein between parties and their respective representatives. No representations, warranties, or promises have been made or relied upon by either party other than is set forth in this agreement. This agreement may not be modified unless done so in writing signed by both parties. Seven, this agreement shall be reported in the Lincoln County Registry of Deeds. Any comment or feedback? Okay, um, there are a lot of, like I said, a lot of whereas.
Before I do, I just want to point out, I guess, to reiterate things that already probably said. I want to point out to the board and any of the people listening that the, the limit of fine that you folks said was five days is actually $5,000 a day. Every day is a violation. And I sent you folks an iteration that proves that with the state statute that says that, you know, if it was 100 days and that would be $5,000 a day or whatever. So point being is that we were misled and perhaps you were, that the limit of the board is set by that. Second of all, you folks have just read something which I hope you find reasonable to believe. And that is to move the structure or otherwise alter it would be an environmental safety hazard. I think that you all have agreed that by signing that, that you've not so much understand of the situation. We've already had one board member of the appeals board resign due to your intention here tonight. And I think that that is a, could be a precursor to other objections which may come forward. I would like to say on the record that I think the building is attractive. I think it does not cause any harm to anybody. And where, and I also admittedly see that it's a self imposed hardship. However, my greatest concern is I haven't integrated it. They said other people will come into this room, write you folks letters and say, well, we made a mistake. But you guys helped beat up your soul, we expect to say. That's the big worry. And I know you say, well, we're just going to get Gary, the law of the CEO, to do a follow up. Things slip through the cracks. And so that's my greatest concern. And I ask you not to sign it tonight until there is a technique that you've been arrived at some language which prohibits anyone from ever considering this as a question and therefore compromising the value of the ordinances of Westport. Thank you.
I, I want to say that related to the $5,000 a day, we contacted our lawyer twice. Because the first time we contacted him, he basically said to you, if you take this to court, chances are you're not going to get any money out of it. We asked him again after we had talked at length to, to Peter Drum, the lawyer. And basically what our lawyer said was that if you take it to court, first of all, we're going to pay a lot of lawyer's fees from our standpoint. And because it wasn't, it, it's not in the shoreline protection area where it's, you know, on the shoreline and causing damage there. It's not in anybody's way. That chances are the judge would, if, if we got anything, we might be lucky to get the 2,500, but probably not even that. And so it was a decision that we had to talk about whether we wanted to spend the town's money for something that we wouldn't actually gain anything from. We may be able to prove that it was somebody's fault. Because as it stands now, nobody has said it's any, any one person's fault. It wasn't determined, it wasn't, it wasn't, it was no intention to determine who was at fault. You could do that in a court. But is it worth it for the town to spend all that money? And chances are the lawyer wouldn't have, have moved it anyway. And so basically, after the second time that we talked to our lawyer, we felt like this was the best move, at least from my perspective. And I'll let these two talk and get their perspectives.
You guys agree that you're not obligated to, to, to scream?
We're actually obligated by ordinance, excuse me, not by a lawyer, she can do it.
I see.
So that is actually, so just letting it lie.
I see. So you feel by, by deductive logic that you're obliged to enter into a agreement?
That is, that is one of the resolutions, the legislative resolution.
You're cat, that's the word, that, not, you can't.
Yeah, but we, we do have to resolve the violation, not allow the violation to continue.
Any comment, any thoughts?
Are you, if I said, if I said that?
I mean, what you're saying, I guess, I could be a little concerned with setting a precedent. I actually said that the other day because of our future revaluation that's coming down the road. And I think that we are going to find things that have fallen through the cracks. But I think part of what the ordinance review committee is looking at is, is how we can revise our permitting and oversight of building on the island. It's going back, there's less of those complaints. And I think that will go a long way into mitigating these kinds of situations from coming up again. And also, you know, you can't let the violations stand. Only the other option is to report. And as Donna said, and several discussions, our, that that it would probably cost a, you know.
Does a board consider raising the amount of money? So it's out there as a deterrent, I mean, like 20 grand? So that someone else thinks it's going to be all, like, hey, Clark, come to this board and pay your fees? They don't get that far.
The lawyer was pretty clear that if we asked for any more, that he was going to go to court. I mean, basically it was sort of a threat.
This is actually, you're getting some of the bolts of how we operate.
Sure. This wasn't, this wasn't. Was, was. I said, oh, I said, okay, well, I'm going to ask the board to assess 20 grand. And if you get sued or anything, I'll support the lawsuit. And I'll do that in writing. So that this needs to be a deterrent, that, that people on the island are aware of these violations and the consequences. 2,500 is chumping. So I'm asking the board that we consider the amount so that it's out there. And so it's going to be a precedent, so the amount will be part of the precedent. And if you get, I'm going to say it again, if the board gets sued by P O and his family, I'll support the lawsuit, I'll pay everything for whatever legal issues the town has to pay to defend the town's position.
I don't think this is appropriate.
Okay.
Honestly, yeah.
You adjust the volume so those of us listening online can hear. We can't hear several of the speakers.
Ralph, who captured here?
We can't hear Lisa and it's hard to hear the people in the audience.
Oh. Should tell the listeners. Is it set on the meeting hour for the, I'm sorry, Ralph?
Is this?
That's meeting hour, yes. That's good, okay, that should be good.
Looks like it's up all the way.
Ralph, Lisa, say something and see if it's any better.
I completely lost my train of thought. How's that?
That's good, we can heal all three of you.
Okay. This is the, the problem, making sure we set the, the mic and the speaker.
The only time I use this is for here, that I use the mic, but yeah. Yeah, I also don't feel comfortable having a private citizen be willing to pay for the town's lawsuit, that, that feels uncomfortable. Although I appreciate your, your offer. I, I just, I, I feel like this has been an opportunity for us to, to realize that we need to fix some things. And one of the things that we need to fix is to make it pretty clear, and this can be part of the ordinance committee, is to make it clear that when somebody takes out a permit that, you know, that they can't do step two or step three or whatever until somebody comes and visits. And I know that Gary had gone and visited, but they didn't work on it for like six months. And by the time, you know, by then, he's sort of forgotten about it. But if, if an ordinance can be written so that it's clear that you cannot pour concrete or you cannot do step two or whatever it is, unless somebody has come and looked at that. So I feel like this is a learning opportunity and trying to use it is that. I, I, I hear you and, and I've talked to others about this issue about no matter what we charge for some, $20,000 isn't much for some people. And my understanding is that the only reason this was brought here anyways because the bank needed it. Well, the bank needed to know that there was no violation. The bank doesn't care anymore. So it, it, the whole purpose of why this was brought up is actually a moot point. So there's no reason that they would want to bring closure to it. So basically it could be, stand open forever. But as Jeff mentioned, you know, the ordinance does say that we need to somehow bring closure to this instead of keeping it open forever. So Mario, you had a comment?
I had a question. Code enforcement officer under plumbing inspector, who is that?
They're one and the same right now, and that is Gary Richardson. It was.
Yeah, I stopped right there.
Yeah.
I mean, this is already a problem. You just said we have to do more inspection. And now we give the code enforcement officer who missed a lot of stuff during my stay on the island, begin an extra job to plumbing, and then you expect that we can live quietly?
Yeah, I know, but in his defense, and it's not just us, it's, it, towns are having difficulty finding these positions and filling these positions. So I know, I know.
That's not an excuse.
It's not, it's, yes, but it's part of what we know, Gary can only be spread so far.
That's correct.
And so if, if he, so we have to put other things in place in order to have this happen, then that's, that's what we have to do.
Why can't we rely on it? If it's already bad now and now we can make some work, it's impossible. That's all, I just want to make your observation for you.
No, we, we realize that. Any further thoughts?
Yeah, I think the difficulty we have is that based on the facts, we know there's a violation. And we need to take action on that violation. And reflect the fact that, again, that, that through the board of appeals process, they reaffirm that it's a violation. And there were no extenuating circumstances to, to allow for variance. So to get closure on this, we negotiated a penalty. I will note that, I don't think this is kind of giving up any information now from negotiations. We were initially advised by our attorney that the penalty we could expect was in three figures, not four or five or six. So we felt good in asking for an amount that was higher than what our attorney thought we'd be able to reasonably expect. The concern about the court cases, they also believe that, given that our process for code enforcement was weak in the sense that most cases now towns will expect there to be an inspection to be done.
A follow up.
A follow, so you have the permit and then inspection before they go and complete the work. And, and we don't do that, we don't require that in ordinance. So his point there was that the likelihood that we'd be able to get any substantial penalties assessed against the, for the violation was going to be highly unlikely.
Well, I agree with that.
That, that, that the, the judge would likely say, you messed up.
Yeah, yeah.
So we wanted to make the, the point, and we have the precedent that there is, when there's a violation, we'll take action, we'll assess a penalty. That they don't get off scot free. There's limitations on what they can do with that property going forward. So there, there should be that, that structure should be destroyed, whatever. They can't replace it, at least inside the, the setbacks. So we've done, we can legally to, to structure this. It's, we recognize that it's not maybe the substantial penalty that some might have thought appropriate, but we felt that it was sufficient to serve as a deterrent. And secondly, that the whole matter of going through this process and keeping track of, of the violation should be a deterrent, that we will be wanting to, to track the actual work and do an inspection before, before major work goes forward or people are at risk. So, and that's partially, again, the, the point about the, the ordinance is to, is to put that in the ordinance. So it's a case. Mario's point is good, that we have an issue in terms of the, the staff time, the ability to follow through. But first we need to adjust our, our ordinances to give us the teeth that we should have and then to follow through. But that was, this, this is a, in a sense of precedent, say that we will take action when there is a violation.
Thank you.
And I also want to point out that largely, though Donna didn't read it, much of the discussion came from the board of appeals decision. So we pulled that information from the facts of what happened.
All the whereas.
Yeah, all the whereas, two pages of whereas were basically pulled from the, the board of appeals decision.
All right, so moving forward a little bit then, would you as a board consider, and I say this as a private citizen, not tonight, but at some
and I say this as a private citizen, not tonight, but at some point, making some kind of a statement, official statement that tells the Board of Appeals, oh Ralph, you can hear this, tells the Board of Appeals that you fully recognize the validity of their independence and of their diligence in performing their task, that this is in no way a slight of their authority or their abilities.
I would say that tonight, we have been saying that we, we have ultimate respect for the Board of Appeals. And this has been part of our challenge. It's been extremely frustrating because one of the things we wanted to be clear about is that we do respect and value the decisions that you made and as, as a Board of Appeals. And we definitely were, did everything we could to try to make sure that it didn't appear as a slight to all of you. You know, Ralph came in and talked to us a couple of weeks ago. We tried to explain what we had, the discussion we'd had with our lawyer, that it had, you know, it had nothing to do with trying to undermine the work that you did. And we have ultimate respect for you and all your work, and that's for the entire board. I think these two would, I'm sure would second that.
Thank you.
Through all this discussion, Davies, I feel like what we need to do is go ahead and sign this and get this over with. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept this consent agreement and hopefully move it forward and bring closure to that with, with the longer parties. Do I have a second? A second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we'll sign this and.
April will need to note this.
Yep, yep. April, you said that we're doing this right now? All right. Next on our agenda is a discussion about some grant that we just got to study the adaptation of town tidal crossings for sea level rise. That's a mouthful in and of itself. And so fortunately, we have, we have Dennis Dunbar here, who will clarify that for us a little bit. And we actually have something I know that we have to sign for you. So we have that as well. So Dennis, tell us about this latest grant, please.
Well, as you probably know, we applied for a grant to, with the Community Resilience Partnership, our governor's main won't wait initiative to evaluate the town's hard infrastructure, the causeways over the Squam Creek and the, the Squam Creek Crossing at Post Office Road and Hill Pond Crossing. Those three crossings will be looked at in light of what the state is advising. We should consider for a baseline sea level rise assumption of 3.8 feet by 2100.
How much?
Three, 3.8 feet.
That's what I thought you said.
About 4 feet.
Yep.
That, that's what we should plan for, what we should prepare for as much as 8.8 feet by 2100. Obviously, the odds of getting that high are pretty small, but that's the outer edge of what could be potential. So they want us to evaluate the risks, the populations that might be located on the stretch of road between Squam Creek and Hill Pond, like Davies. Make sure that, consider their safety and wellbeing. And in the course of doing that, we may adjust the required upward if we think there's a high risk to a population or another town infrastructure. It's mainly a dozen homes that we'd be concerned about. So we'll be doing that assessment. We'll also be looking at marsh, marsh restoration to the degree that marsh restoration might be beneficial to the community and to the wildlife. We have got an agreement with the Kentucky State Land Trust, Ruth Hendrick, who's a specialist in marsh restoration, is got a separate complimentary grant that she'll be applying some resources to assist us in our study. And in addition to that, we will be looking at sea level rise impacts to all of the homes, public and private roads around the perimeter of the island, which turns out to be 36 miles if you count all the nooks and crannies and inlets. It's 36 miles of shoreline. And we'll be looking at each and every property around that perimeter and its impact using a model that we're partnering with Lincoln County Planning Commission. They have a specialist on GIS and they're working with their main geological survey. And we'll be using a model that they develop. And we'll be able to see, using this model, which properties are inundated. Any, any footprint of a house that gets inundated will turn bright red. It'll be very visible. We'll be able to see it. Any road that's inundated will turn dark black. So we'll see that. So we'll be able to identify, survey and identify each and every property that might be at risk under various sea level rise scenario so that we can communicate that with property owners. And of course, buildings that are town-owned, like the ferry landing house with the town. So all of that is about to get kicked off. The grant start date is October the 26th. The funding that the state would provide us is $50,000, which obviously isn't going to go very deep into any of this, but it'll be a start. And that funding will take a few weeks to get here and it'll come as the prior grant. It'll come as one check for a large sum amount. And then it'll be up to us to manage the, the costs that go against that account. The first cost will be associated with the environmental engineering analysis. We'll be putting up instrumentation at the, at the, at the causeways and at Squam Creek and at Hill Pond. And those instruments will help to measure tidal up and down in those areas, which is pretty minimal. We'll also be doing hydrogeological analysis using various computer modeling to determine the amount of land area that flows into the creeks and into the tidal inlets so that we can determine if we were to provide a proper sized opening, how big that opening would need to be to accommodate flow and proper flow, not only under today's conditions, but projected increased storm activities in the future. So for that engineering analysis, which will primarily lead to a lot of data and some basic requirements on spans and heights for any openings, we had partnered in the grant with Wright Pierce. And so Wright Pierce will perform that work for us. I know Davies has expressed to me strong reservations about Wright Pierce. They're doing hard engineering work because of experience he's had with them in the past. And he advised me to consult with Dennis Simmons over in Muscat, who had just gone through the experience that Davies was familiar with on Old Ferry Road, where there's a similar crossing and a similar design problem was addressed. And they came up with a hard design, but the hard design had some, some faults because they forgot to really address sewer line infrastructure. Fortunately, we don't have sewer lines or any utilities, but that was a big issue. And so Dennis had a very frank and candid conversation with me. He said, yeah, they, they probably erred in what they did. But he said, he would work with them again. He said, they wouldn't be my first choice for hard engineering right now, but I would work with them again. So.
Well, if I could speak up a little bit here, my experience actually is on three projects. That's one of them. And as then, you know, to cause them to be well chastised in my fashion, I'm requesting that the town seek pricing from two other engineering firms that I've already told Dennis about. Dennis has logical reservation that he went into this sort of with Wright Pierce as, as the initial people. And he feels that there's an ethical concern there and I have to recognize that. However, I hate to see the town exacerbate an error. And I'm requesting that the folks go to two other firms or others I can recommend too and get pricing from them and then assess that. That's all. And I think when you spend 50 grand, it's appropriate to get pricing instead of just saying, oh, all right. Well, they're nice people or they have a nice portfolio. Let's do that. So that's my request to the board that you suggest to Dennis that he get prices from two other firms.
And I know we had talked about this with the water, well, water issue. And what we discovered with that is that there weren't many people out there who did that work. It sounds like there are other people who do this work as well, Dennis?
The, the hard engineering kind of work, there, there are many people that do that. The people that do the environmental engineering studies, the hydrogeological type work are pretty limited. I consulted with Kentucky State Land Trust. Like I said, they do a lot of marsh restoration work and, and work with contractors and they've worked with several, like Pierce being one of them. And the, the best in the industry is somebody down in Massachusetts at Woods Hole. And that's where the specialists really are located. So my, my recommendation would be, since we're not doing any hard engineering, we're just doing environmental analysis, which, which they did well on the, on the Muscat project. It's the hard engineering that my pledge would be, we will go get competitive bids when it comes time to do any real engineering work. I think that's where the money is and that's where the risks that Davies experienced with, with his three experiences are. For this level of work, I don't think there's much risk with Wright Pierce. They, they definitely have the expertise. That is their specialty is environmental engineering.
Thoughts? Cause my first thought was, I, I was thinking about our, the policy that we've established for going out and getting work, which is to say if it's over 20,000, we, we have to have competitive bids. So, you know, and the thing is, if you, like with the water sample work, there were only two people even available. So it feels like at least making an effort to say, I can at least look around and see. I mean, I, I know if you're going to go down to Woods Hole, down in Massachusetts, they're going to cost, and then I'm going to consider doing this. But I think that would make everybody feel a little bit better if you at least, I, I don't know how hard that would be for you to do, Dennis, to, to, to say, let me, let me check in with a couple of other people.
Well, we have to fix a lot of money.
Right, right. So, so that's the thing too, is if you ask somebody to do this and they'd say, yeah, we would do this, but it's a hundred thousand dollars, great. At least you've done that to say, okay, this is another reason why we're going with Wright Pierce is because they're the only ones willing to do this for this amount of money. I think that would make that, that's just my two cents. But we have two other people here?
Yeah, let me just point out that the question came up with the state. The state was asked, are there any limits to where you would need to get competitive bids? The state said, no, this is up to the town to decide how they want to operate. We have no requirements other than what the town has in its own requirements and ordinances. We have no specific requirement in the town, as I understand it, with competitive bids.
We, we did adopt the policy about a month ago. That did say that for things over 20,000 we would do, unless it was found that there was no reasonable option. And, and this may still fall in that, in that case. I, I'd be curious, Dennis, of the 50,000 grant, is there more than one package of workers? Is all 50,000 going to go to a vendor, to a contractor? Or is it going to be a portion going to Wright Pierce?
Yeah, $49,100. So it's the Wright Pierce. The rest of it is volunteer or other complimentary grants.
Okay.
So if, if, if you went to two other firms, Dennis, with due respect to your diligence, and one came back at 36,000, another one 42, and then you presented that information to this board, and let's say you went with a 42 just for kicks, the other 8,000 doesn't need to be spent, does it? I mean, does the state say you better spend it all?
Well, the, the requirement is any unspent money at the end of the grant from the back of the state.
Well, then I think it's appropriate that we respect the, the, you know, the needs of the state and say, we don't need to spend it if we find another firm that's going to do the same diligence for less money. So that's my view. We don't need to spend all that. So.
Well, I think when Dennis originally proposed this and came forward with the proposal to the select board that we would authorize going forward, we did agree to this single vendor and designated vendor provider of the service. So I think it.
Did you do that before we did the procurement policy?
Yes, we did. Now, this, this is back several months ago, I think July, when we submitted the proposal. And, and so when Dennis had gone forward, it was with the understanding that he found a vendor who could do the job and the, the price was reasonable, it seemed. So, so it seemed, I think this is, this is something we then said, fine, we can go forward.
Yeah, but it seems logical that the decision of the board that 20,000 should be the, let's say the milestone, and after that it should go to bid, that would supersede anything prior to that.
Well, this is why we have a, a problem of, of rights and wrongs and conflicting rights. We did say go forward. We proposed this with understanding to the state, one perspective, which was actually with a, a partner that was identified in the, in the proposal. So I think in that sense, we're sort of obligated, I think, to go forward. We agreed at that time not to go out and seek other, other, other options.
Well, that was a wonder.
Well, maybe. We don't know. We don't know.
Dennis, off the top of your head, you had said that environmental engineers are, there's not a lot of them around. Off the top of your head?
I, I couldn't list them by name. Is it up, up in Camden? Garrity and something?
Yeah, yeah. Thor, Thorstein.
Yeah, Thorstein.
Yeah, they're, they're top notch.
They are, they are good. And they do environmental engineering. But, you know, they're going to have to come down from Camden to 10 instruments back and forth. So, and they're, they're high-end operation. My, my guess is that this will be a lot cost effective for them.
Well, could be, yeah. And I'd like to point out Wright Pierce is a national organization. And the, the folks that messed around with ferry landing, the ferry road improvements, they, they came out of Portsmouth. So just because they have an office in Topson doesn't mean that Topson is going to be the one that's going to, they're going to send someone that's an expert in the field.
They have a sign in there. He's from Topson.
Okay. So that's all I've asked. Let's, let's not be H C, girl. Let's.
I, I think we have a timeline though, that we also signed up for in the proposal. And maybe, Dennis, how, how, is there, is it feasible for us to take time to, to do a self petition?
Well, one of the, one of the objectives stated in our proposal, as written by Wright Pierce, is they wanted to get the instrumentation in, in the fall because they wanted to be able to take measurements during the time when we have higher probability of more serious storm activity. So yeah, if, if this drifts off into January, we'll miss the window of opportunity.
So I, I'm wondering, in, instead of doing a rigid bid policy like we've done in the past, and especially if, if, if we said yes to the grant before we made the, the, the policy that we have for the town. I'm wondering if, if you even were able to share, like, you know, here's the plan based on the, the grant and share that with, for example, the, the folks in Camden and got a sense for what they would charge. and got a sense for what they would charge, because you said they're high-end, at least. I think people would feel better if they knew that, you know, you did, you, you checked elsewhere, and e- even if it wasn't a, a, a very formal process, at least could come back and say that, you know, the Camden Doski, or whoever it was, you know, was gonna charge for the same amount, was gonna charge a hundred thousand or something. Um, I, I'm sort of torn, you know, I, 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 I know Dennis, and I know how hard you work, and, and, um, I, I feel like it's putting something more on you. But I also feel like we made this, this policy that now-
But also the twenty-sixth is a week from Thursday.
Yeah. But it doesn't have to be in that twenty-six, it's gotta be in this hall, right?
This is hall.
Well, the work-
I say to them, you know, how quick can you do it? If you just ask the question, what's the harm in it, truly? Please.
Yeah, the only harm from my perspective is, we've established a relationship, a partnership, and we've been going hand in hand to get this project underway with enthusiasm. And now we're talking about, hey, sorry, guys.
So you've pretty much already, this whole time you're writing the grant, pretty much-
They wrote it. They, they wrote the state of the work.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it wasn't, uh, us writing it, asking them to bid.
This, this is early on getting a, a partner, which was, which was, at times seemed like a godsend. Someone was actually done, uh, similar project.
Yeah. And then also, that's not even knowing if you're gonna get the money. So, yeah. Yeah, I hear you.
One comment, when I go request bids, that's why I'm being compensated for them. This man does not get compensated. We need to keep that in mind. And he does. He's put a warning in this.
I know, I know, I know.
And I'm hearing Davey's loud and clear, too. I understand.
Yeah, I do, but I don't, I don't-
But he doesn't get compensated, well, get-
No, no, he doesn't get any compensation whatsoever. I, I, I am so aware of that. Yeah.
Keep that in mind.
Yeah, yeah.
If this were the, the firm engineering work to design a bridge or a structure, there's no question it would be competitively bid. It has to be.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But because it's a grant, right, because it was a grant, right?
Yeah.
But because it was a grant, the process was a little different than if you had work to be done, and you needed to find for the town, people to do that work. You worked with Wright Pierce to, to do this grant. It would seem a little, yeah.
Well, I'd like to suggest that, and this is again a deference to your skill, that, um, I'd like to, uh, oversee the project, uh, in some fashion to assess whether we got forty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars worth of value, or did they come up with one day, put three tide cages up, then come back three months later and read it and write it down on this paper, and say, give us forty-nine thousand dollars? If you don't mind, I, I-
I would welcome your, uh, pet support. Thank you.
All right. Sounds like a win-win situation.
Well, that was, that was one of my thoughts also, is like, how do you, who, how do you know? Like, would they come here and they do these kinds of things?
Or just work?
Yeah, like, yeah, you know, physical boots on the ground, and who's here in time, yeah.
Thank you.
So with that, uh, I'm going to, um, make a, 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 make a motion that we, um, sign this agreement, um, that gets things moving. And this is an agreement between the Town of Westport and Wright Pierce, uh, for the Westport Island Climate Resiliency Study. Uh, and basically, um, I just need to sign, I think it's signing my life away. I haven't read all the fine details. Um, actually, it's a, it's a basic, uh, agreement that, um, talks about the different work that they're going to do. Um, so, and I know you need this to get moving.
Yeah, everybody else needs a copy.
You know, I would love for, for, um-
I gave one to Davey.
Good, Davey's to have one.
He wouldn't let me out of the room.
No, at least not, just, just one more.
And, um, don't, oh, if you have extras, because I'm giving this to you, actually. So I'll trade you one for a blank one, and I'll sign this one.
Don't you send both? I had one with, with paper clips. Where did that one go? Could I give that to you?
No. You want me to sign one with paper clips?
Well, that way, uh-
It's gonna make me confused.
Um, excuse me, before you guys put pen to paper. So Dennis, uh, under the payments to the engineer, uh, they're gonna get paid forty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. That's the simplest. Uh, so, would you be willing to add a little bit of language that says, um, according to, uh, you know, the work performed, or something like that? So that, I mean, they're, they're just gonna try forty-nine thousand, or-
It's a lot to achieve.
Yeah, I see that, but it doesn't say that you can pay them any less if they, it didn't seem like their work would work yet. You know what I mean? I'd hate to be a pain in the ass tonight. I'll come back for another couple of months.
He was, he was-
Gromus, Gromus? Yeah, I do promise.
Yeah, you're talking about data collection, also stakeholder outreach, uh, public outreach. There's a whole bunch of things that they're, they're going to be doing, not just-
Part of that will be, again, the committee, right? For any, for some of that?
Yeah, they'll, they'll be, they'll be making presentations and public hearings.
Yeah. Um, do I make data, October, what?
Uh, October twenty-sixth.
Do you guys have a vote to sign that? If you did, I missed that.
We did not. Uh, I made a motion.
We hadn't gotten that before, we got so sidetracked. So I'll second that motion, to approve this agreement.
And all in favor?
Thank you.
All right. And Dennis, here's your signed copy. Um, and we'll, we'll be expecting to hear more from that. But Dennis, don't go away, because you're next on the list again.
Before, get me out of that. I just wanna note again, the importance of this particular project. Uh, we needed to get some, uh, information to help us then plan for the engineering. It's going to be expensive to do the engineering on the West Shore Road, on the causeway there, uh, on, on Post Office Road, and on the Hill Pond. So, part of, the, the importance of this project is to give us information that'll help us to go forward then, and get, seek another grant, uh, hopefully to, to, to pay for the extensive engineering costs that, that's gonna be involved in those, those projects. Uh, so getting this project done, and getting it done soon, is important so we can then go out and, and, and get money while there's still federal funds around to do so.
Would have been interesting to see, have their equipment up, um, earlier this year when, uh, um,
Oh, yeah.
when it, the water went up over, uh, Squam Creek and Hill Pond there. Yeah, yeah, kinda scary. Yeah. All right.
I guess I, I could make you aware that Noah has, has a grant application, uh, coming due in mid-November. And, uh, they are soliciting regions, but this is the focus, is on marsh restoration. And, uh, uh, we might be invited to be a part of that larger regional application. It'll be a multimillion dollar-
Wow.
-application. I'll know more about that later this week.
The marsh rest- restoration, are there areas that they're targeted already, or?
Well, Squam Creek certainly is, uh, is the prime, uh, opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and then at Post Office Road, uh, that, that is a route for marsh migration to the south.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so preparing for that is, uh, is one of the objectives.
Sort of, the, the, between, um, Post Office and Squam Creek, not, it's not Squam Creek, it's East Shore, East Shore Road, West Shore Road.
West Shore Road.
Yep, that area right there.
The lower area, yeah, yeah. Jimmy's favorite color, huh?
So I wanna actually just, um, I didn't ask you to do this, but if you'd be willing, um, and if, I mean, I can add to it, or, um, uh, Dick is also on here today, Dick Tucker, Dick and Pat. Um, just to give a little update on the well water test project, um, because there were questions asked about when we would hear things and when we would hear about the report. So, do you wanna make, say anything about that?
Yeah, we, we, uh, received, uh, the results for about a hundred and sixty-six families' wells. And, uh, they've all now been reported out to the property owners. Carol is still analyzing the results of all that data to get statistics of, and patterns of where there might be higher, uh, salt intrusion, where there might be evidence of bacterial problems. And, uh, that will all be compiled, and we'll be able to see using GIS technology that Carol will be working with, be able to see geographically patterns that might emerge from that. Uh, but we're basically now complete with the initial round of water sampling and reporting out to property owners. Uh, we got remarkably good response from the community on, um, getting wells tested. We're very happy with that. Carol's very happy with that. And now, the next step is, and Dick is there, he can chime in, if, uh, if he wants, but his, I think, focus is gonna be on selecting wells for long-term monitoring, and establishing that phase of the program. So we turned in our quarterly report this week, and-
Thank you.
The state was happy to get it.
Good.
Echo one math error.
Yeah, there, there had been some questions about when we, people here, um, with Dick having his injury, and then Carol had her own personal issues, and, um, so it was a little bit of a challenge, all of a sudden. Um, but we got together, and everybody did get a personal, um, letter.
I did have a question, actually it was Davey's who was asking, the overall report, or the overall statistics. Do we have any idea when that might be available for public consumption? There's supposed to be a general report.
Yes, that's one that Carol will do. When does the grant end?
Maybe it's a two-year grant.
Uh, yeah, I'm pretty sure it's a two-year grant, yeah. So probably closer to the end of that, two years.
So, wait, wait next year, maybe, for the final reports.
Because we just, she just got the test results now. So now her job, and, and really where the brunt of the money goes for the grant, is to her to do the analysis and whatnot. Um, so she will now, it's pretty much out of the committee's hands, and now in hers, where she will do, um, the analysis of, of all of that. So it, it will be a, a good long while. You know, individuals got theirs, but her report will just, it will all be looking for patterns and that kind of thing, but, um, no highlighting, you know, anybody's well or anything like that. But individuals did get their notices.
When, with the quarterly reports, could we generally get a, a copy, maybe just send it to the select board address? So we have, I don't, if April has it, but it would just be good for us to, to have it.
Yeah, I think it's been going to the treasurer, not treasurer.
Well, she needs it, I guess, because the payment.
Funny stuff. I'll, I'll send out a copy of the last two reports to everybody.
That'd be great. But again, if you just send it to the select board, we could, we can access it that way. Makes it a little bit easier.
All right, um, citizens' issues.
I'm here to check what's going on with my garbage dump down the road.
And actually, I'm glad you came, because, um, Jeff and I planned to go, and, two weeks ago, and our schedules never met, and then last week, I was out of town most of the week. And so you showed up, and it's like, oh my God, I never got back to Jeff to say, because he and I have to figure out our schedule, the two of us are gonna come and do a, a site visit, um, and, uh, let him know that, um, that his, uh, property meets the criteria for a, um, a junkyard, and that he needs to, uh, either get rid of the junk or, uh, apply for a, um, a permit, but, which, he's-
Well, I did a little digging myself, and I was told by some other town that having small engines laying in the ground on old cars would automatically be a red flag. On the next day, somebody would be there to inspect the engines, if they're dripping oil or if they're not dripping oil. So I think something should happen. That was the answer I called a few towns, two towns told me. That would be a red flag.
My understanding is, is that Gary did go there and check engines, and, um, this is a couple of years ago.
Yeah, Gary doesn't have a good report, in my book. So, you know, I doubt very much that his engines have been cleaned from Europe. So that was one comment. But they told me, you know, I could call the environmental department myself. I don't want to do that. But it should be taken care of.
Jeff and I, I will make this commitment now, that Jeff and I will look at our calendars again this week, uh, and see if we can't figure out this week or next.
Just on, on that too, more, uh, I think, uh, two years ago, I called the D E P and talked about it, and they, uh, chose not to, to step in.
I would, that's just I'm repeating what, what I was told.
One thing, one thing to point out, uh, our benefit, and your benefit, is that that property abuts a very valuable wetland complex, we call it a dandy bog.
Gary said no, it wasn't an issue.
Um, the, again, it's part of what I, I actually sent a picture to the D E P showing the, the, uh, the wetland area adjacent to the, the property. And again, there, they, it was not sufficient cause for them to take action.
But the next thing is, the twenty feet, the twenty feet eastward.
Yeah.
There's no way. So this is a black and white. It stays there, that should be. But then, you know, there's a visit, there must be a visit on, I don't want to kill the guy, but I think things should happen slowly.
Yeah, we, we, we had, um, looked at our calendars, we were gonna move forward with that, and, and that's totally our fault.
So just let me know.
Yeah, yeah. I've, I've got a note here now, and, um, we're both guilty. We looked at our calendars, and then-
And the system, I'll be back, so.
Yeah. No, it's good, when you show up, it's like, oh, yeah, I didn't do it again. But we'll, we'll set a date, and, um-
When you go change this street sign. It is illegal to move the street sign. So there should be no problem putting it back. I had some tenants who came again for the cottage. Needless to say, I get a phone call because they couldn't see the sign, because it's on the other side of the road where-
And you are on the, of the side of the road?
So when people come, when people come down Greenlit Road, they see the sign. Right now, it's on that side, and it's hidden by a tree. It used to be on the far side.
So you are on the closer side, on the same-
To the water.
That's where it is now, though, but it's on the road.
No, no, now it's up the hill, meaning-
It is up the hill.
It's, it's not very busy. It's, the people-
If you wanted to stand on the corner.
Other corner, on the far side, meaning, when I come down Greenlit Road, I look up, it says Taylor Road. Then I make a left and go up the hill, and I even, I think-
So I gotta wait, who's, who's gonna beat me up more, you or the woman down the road?
No, it's not the woman, it's the guy.
So who's it gonna be, Mario?
And he's, he's goddamn nuts, that is. But anyhow, uh, the only other thing, I think it came about because some people went into his house. So I think if we can get some, I think there's eighteen, thirty, uh, eighteen, twenty, eight, and seventeen, the numbers, with an hour going upstairs. I might do that myself, so just to keep my neighbor happy.
With, with the sign moved, you say?
Yes.
Okay, so the private, the private road signs moved.
Yep.
I have private citizen?
Yes. Um, he promised me no chemical, he would change it, but I think, so now, I would be back.
I know, I can see how you are, Mario.
You're also on his list now, join Jeff and me.
Yeah, I'm on Mario's list, I'm on your list, I think. No, no, you're good, you're good. Mario, I got some other signs to put up, and, and signs have been up.
See, I would do it myself. See, I would do it myself. That guy is nuts, so I don't want to.
The guy. Yeah. Just don't put up the schoolhouse road sign.
Right. That's a moot point at this point. I pulled out the more sign, and she was happy.
All right, so we will move forward with this. Jeff and I will talk after the meeting. Whoops, we can't talk after the meeting. Jeff and I will figure out our schedules and plan to set a time that the two of us could go there. He's got the background because he's done this for a couple of years and maybe a new person coming in. You know, five, two, I can bully him to.
Yeah, yeah, you can do it.
I just want another citizens' issue. I had made an observation to the board about the fact that Eric Howes, who's the public affairs outreach guy at Main Yankee is retiring this year. And Eric was a key player in the effort we made to acquire the Yankee Bog and put it under the ownership of Land Trust. And at the time we did that, we were also exploring what to do about the Main Yankee properties that are a budding town-owned property. Two one-acre pieces, one being a carve-out from the town's parcel right there on Mosher's Hill, and the other one acre being just across the street from from that across Main Road, a long skinny parcel that goes down to the shore with an adjacent easement that runs beside it down to the shore. With Eric leaving, it might be a good time to try to, before he goes, to get that issue brought up between the town and Main Yankee. They, they had indicated to us at the time that they wanted to give it a couple of years to see if something can be worked out with the town about that. And I think if you lose Eric, you're probably gonna get sent back another bunch of years. This might be an opportunity to try to get that settled, and I suspect they would be happy to transition those properties to the town. And then you can decide what you want to do with them, if anything.
I remember having a discussion about this with the abutter for the one strip that goes down. And my understanding is that 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 property, the Main Yankee property, goes within a few feet of the house. And right now, they mow a huge area just to give them some space. So, you know, what you see going down to the water is a narrow strip. But it actually gets very close to the abutter's house.
Yeah. Well, it might be the right answer is that that strip, that would be a fee property, could be transferred to the property owner that abuts. And that would still leave the wider section, which is just an easement, where you could maybe even give some of that to the abutting property owner on the other side and retain a piece of that easement for a trail, the public access to the shore. That would be one way to address that, solving the problem with approaching of privacy of the property to the north.
Yeah.
And at the same time, preserving strip that could be used, retaining an easement for a strip that could be used for a trail for public access in the event that's in the interest of the town.
Could you give us Eric's information and follow through?
Eric and his boss, the president of Main Yankee over there, I'll give you contact information for both. The president is also very familiar with our project to acquire the Yankee Bog property. He was very much involved in that, too. So they're both good contacts that might just disappear from soon.
Yeah, I think something for us to talk about. Not, not tonight, and definitely not make a decision about tonight, but just having that contact would be helpful. Thank you. Just one more citizens' issue. It's not really, it's actually a nice thing, not necessarily an issue, but Bonnie Hamilton did let us know that DEP had been, had been looking at some samples and whatnot on their property. And basically, everything was okay. And so she wanted us to know that. And it was in an email, but there's a whole kit and caboodle. So that's a positive thing because I think there was concern that she's on the corner of post office road there. And so they had looked at the, her well and found it to be okay. There was concern about.
I think all the wells have been.
Well, that's the only one that we heard from.
Well, I just, the area, the people on the log cabin road, promo, pardon, promo road, also have been tested. But we haven't officially heard anything, but what I unofficially heard is that there's been no, nothing found from those tests.
And hopefully, if something, somebody heard something negative that we released here. But so far, it looks good. So I just wanted to give that little bit of update. Before we go to roads, I just wanted to give a brief update on our woodwork from Saturday. And Jim, feel free to chime in. I didn't count how many people we had, but we found out just before we were going to start the project that MMA was sort of nixing our use of saws and splitters, which is pretty much how you do the work when you do woodworking. But in spite of that, we wound up having about four trucks. People contributed their time and their vehicles. We had, I think her name was Peg Curran, up on Strawberry Hill, who gave us a really long, already nicely stacked dry wood. And so we went up there and it's now stacked in the nice shed. I will be sending a message on Facebook and just letting, you know, a little thank you to people, but I also wanted to do it publicly here. Dale, Dale Reno, he actually allowed us to use his bucket since we originally had everything behind the salt shed. Now I'll move to the front. He also was the one that built the shed that now houses the wood. I've got an email into Holly Stover, who, Stover, who is in charge of the woodchucks in Booth Bay to find out how they have handled the legal issues around using splitters and saws. Because I was there personally, and I saw lots of saws and lots of splitters and big trucks and everything else. So clearly, they've got a way to, they've worked it. We did have everybody sign waivers anyway. Although we were told that they might not be as useful as we think they were. Nobody hurt themselves, so that's good. So one of the things that we'll need to figure out is, and I figure this is going to be a good conversation with input from others, but how we deal with the wood as well as how we deal with the salt and sand this, this winter when we start to have, you know, the slippery roads and we need to do something for the salt and sand. And my feeling right now is that, you know, it's going to be there and you take what you need. But, you know, other towns have done a variety of different places. Some towns have stopped doing it because they lost so much sand. But I think we need to have some conversation about this, not today, but I just, I wanted to just give an update on where we were with the wood. Right now, we aren't looking for any more wood. We need to figure out how we can legally, without getting MMA mad with us, at us, looking at how to split the wood so we can finish stacking that. But if you look out there, I think there's a nice pile out there. So, and we did talk to Dale, he did come. So we confirmed with him where we can put wood so it's not in the way of his doing any plowing or whatever. So he worked with us with that. So Jim, anything to add? You were there the whole time. Thank you.
No, no problem. No, nothing to add. I think it went well. Many handles may quite work.
Yep.
All went well.
Yeah, we had Dave and Sue Avery who spent the entire time with us. We had DeeDee, Greenleaf, we had.
Avery's.
Yep, Avery's, I've already mentioned.
Grover.
Oh, Grover Rose was there and contributed his truck.
Lynn.
Oh, Lynn Patterson was there as well. Yeah, I got the whole list. And Ed, somebody came. Unfortunately, I couldn't read his signature. Kieran, does that name ring a bell? Delivered a nice load of wood.
Yes. Art Weber was here.
What was his name? Oh, Art, of course, Art Weber was there the whole time. Yep, yep, and had his truck available. So we had a nice, a nice group. And I, we were there from like nine to 2:30, something like that. So a lot accomplished. And we'll figure out, you know, we're not taking names or anything else. We want people to use it, but we're gonna have to figure out where's the dry wood, where's the green wood? Right now, what's stacked is all dry wood, ready to go. Some of the wood that needs to be split is a mixture of green and dry. And as it's split, we'll figure out how to stack that. So I just thought I'd give an update, especially if somebody shows up, they'll wonder what in the world is going on there. We don't want anybody to contribute anymore without contacting us. We don't want people just dropping off wood because our concern is that'll be mostly pine. We don't need any more pine. We have pine there already. Any comments or questions? All right, next on the agenda, roads.
Roads. I went to get cold patch Friday afternoon. I was working in West Bath unless, well, it makes sense. Go to Thompson's and get the cold patch. Since I was on noon time, they're out, they've been out for a month. They plan on making it tomorrow next month. It's a pretty unique piece of equipment. There's only one, like, old northeast. They usually only make it once a year. And they're up, so that's the status that, so I guess the three-quarter, I catch some bones on both main road, west door and back door road, ran out on post office road. So the next afternoon, I get that I have an afternoon, I'll do the rest of them. Do the cold patch as soon as I can get it. I obviously got some street signs to do. And I'm looking at him, too, because he wants to push them up. I get a call by Patty Rhodes, a fellow that lives in there, about a popple tree that is doing the split. Half to his side, half to town, excuse me, the state side. I called the state. He said he was gonna look at it and get back to me. He got me off the phone. I haven't heard from him. I'll be making a call to him again tomorrow. Because this is Friday I talk to him. I will give him a call again tomorrow because it's not a big tree. It may or may not hit the wires. It's gonna cause an inconvenience. I can make a phone call to a fellow that cuts trees. I could probably cut that tree. I'm pretty sure of them. I don't feel it's a town's responsibility to pay that bill. So I want to see what Zach has to say tomorrow about what they're gonna do about it. This fellow's concerned. He's leaving the 20th. He's worried about losing power while he's not there. You know, maybe he's worried about the furnace not restarting or something, something, I don't know, but he has a concern. He's not the only one that's mentioned it to me. Do what I can do.
Thank you for not, for trying to make sure that the town isn't paying for something that doesn't have to pay.
Well, yeah, I, you know, I just think they should be a little more, just like the culvert there at the same location right before Dennis's room. They was kind of, well, we'll check it up tomorrow. Well, what's his name, Gordon. Gordon and I pretty well had the water flowing. And I stopped down, gave him some moral support. We got the water flowing, Gordon's down there, and I was down there, and I went down the next day, and the water was flowing even better. But their response to certain things has not been. And I understand they got things going everywhere, and they saw it handed. So I understand, but it doesn't help our situation.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. All right.
Maybe if I could, I've got a couple of points on roads that, not coming from Jim's direction, but just coming from the state. So this might be the best place for me to jump in on that. So there was a Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission session last week on roads where the director of the Main Local Road Center, Pete Coglin, came. One of the planners for the MDOT, Steve Cole, came. And it's some of the local towns, people involved with roads. Couple of things that came out of that is that there is a person at state level who focuses on speed. And I did talk to him actually later at the MNA conference last week. And he would be glad to come down and meet with the select board, but also the road commissioner and the road committee and talk about things that we might be able to do to address the speeding issues. I did get from one of the MDOT people some signage related to pedestrians and bikes. But the other things suggested were some devices to put alongside the roadway which might cause cars to slow down. So this is kind of the idea. What can you do short of putting in a rumble strip on 144 to get people to slow down? And so they have some ideas. What I'd like to do is ask for Jim and the road committee and select board and others who might want to be involved to get a time when we could do it and I could set up that meeting with that, that person from the DOT.
Yeah, make it happen.
The other thing that's nice is that they also have some funding to do this. So we may be able to get some help with that, having to be much. So that would be a nice thing.
I did see through some trade catalogs that those speed limit signs you was talking about, they're kind of portable, three to $4,000. So it'd be really nice if you could get one.
Well, that, yeah.
They're not cheap.
Well, that's, that's cheap.
Right, compared to important, you know, ones. This one had solar panel on it.
So, yeah, it has its own power. That's the key. So this is one of the other things that was brought up, and actually it's Whitefield who brought it up. The state used to have a program where they would give to towns, basically this speed camera setup. And they were less expensive than what we've gotten from the sheriff's department, a smaller, smaller rig. But one of the things that you could do is it would store the speeds recorded. So you got to see just what's, what are the speeds by this place in town, this place in town. And Whitefield joked that what's handy is that you can then tell the sheriff's deputies where they should hang out, where the problem is the worst and they're most likely to catch offenders. The sad thing was is that, you know, having a speed setup work for a few weeks, people slow down and then speeds start to go back up again. So as a deterrent to speeding, they're not, not great. But they are good for collecting information. And if it's, we get it for that amount of little money, we might be able to swing something.
I know they have certain laws and criteria they have to meet when doing a speed trap or whatever you want to call it. But I have not seen anybody in the paper summons for speeding unless they were criminal speeding, which is 30 miles an hour over. If they sat on the south end of Bridge Road, they would meet all their criteria. And they would catch people if they said, all right, anybody going 10 miles an hour over, anybody going 55 miles an hour over, what am I gonna give a ticket to? They would give some tickets up and a short period, tell them. But it don't happen.
Well, maybe we could ask.
I'm more worried about twenty over, honestly. Someone's going fifty-five, it's a little fast, they're not gonna, but you're still kinda driving responsibly, I don't know. Personally, thirty over is crazy.
The only ones I've seen that you see in the papers, thirty plus over.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, I'm fifty-five.
Especially in the evening this time of year.
On the, the bridge road is not so bad because it's a straight shot, but some of those areas, I know just some of the curves to go home, it's like.
You, you're coming around the curve, you're coming up the, up, up the hill.
Right, but if you're coming from the others.
And they're sitting in the south end of Bridge Road, they're gonna have you.
Af- yeah, after the, the bridge on either side there, it's.
Between quarter to four and five o'clock. In the evening, afternoon. They would have no problem.
No, probably gonna give me a ticket though. I'm sorry, I gotta play this to be.
That is no excuse, young lady.
They're straightaways, it happens. If you're going forty-five, sometimes you're going fifty, fifty-five, just. You're changing heat or something.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think we should be picking on people who are still being reasonably safe. I think we wanna go after the dangerous speeders. And to me, that's like highway speeds, sixty, sixty-five, obviously seventy, criminal speeding, but you know. I don't know, yeah, I don't know how you stay on the road, but people do, do it, and I've seen it.
The road rage, I think is a really bad one.
I think if you go after people going fifty-five, you're gonna give out a ton of tickets, you're gonna make everyone angry. And you're not gonna get.
You gotta slow people down.
You wanna get the bad ones.
Let's not go over forty-five. I think it takes, it takes effort. I, I will say it takes effort. I've had to train myself.
I do too.
Over the last couple of years to, to slow down to forty-five, but it can be done. Uh, even when you're late on something.
Thank you, Jeff. On that, but I'm just saying, I don't think that's very realistic.
Well, but I'm saying it's something we need to try to do.
There's gonna be some sort of. Space here between forty-five and before you.
Ticket.
Pull somebody over.
Yeah.
Well, there may be one. Area where ticket, alright, well, here, you know, twelve fifteen over is a ticket.
It, it's a safety concern primarily. And again, it's a lot of what we have folks come in and talk about is they're concerned about walking to their mailbox across one forty-four. Uh, and, and again, they're not on the s- the real straightaways, but it's not like, uh, it's that curvy either.
David Shaw, I've seen more people pass there when I used to work there in the morning.
Not that far from.
And, you know, I'm not talking one a week, I'm talking one or two every morning. Going off the island, going to work, passing right there. Now, it's pretty straightaway and you've got a dotted line both sides, but. When you pull back into your lane, you're in the danger zone.
It, 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 but it is something, it's not, I think most people on the island speak. They go over the speed limit, not necessarily dangerously, but some do. And I don't disagree with April, that, that would be our, I think the focus, we wanna get that down. But I think in general, it hooes us all to be mindful of the speed limit.
Absolutely, um. I agree, you're gonna be mindful, you're gonna take responsibility. One thing that is a big deterrent. Is I got pulled over for a seatbelt several years ago, because I never wore a seatbelt. And the ticket was seventy dollars. No problem. Then I, my insurance renewed and it was another three hundred dollars a year, for three years, so it was a thousand dollar ticket. When you hit people in the wa- in the pocketbook. They bring their ways, and guess what? Ever since that thousand dollar ticket, I wore a seatbelt.
That needs to be published.
Okay, I got ourselves on speeding.
Yes.
But the other point uh, we, we're talking about was uh, uh, bike, uh, bike safety. In bike lane, because again, particularly in the summertime, we have bikers uh, trying to do the, and it's often not safe. Uh, the D O T's uh, uh, bike safety engineer liked Westport Island in the summer. Um, so he came down to go to the brewery. Uh, he did like the beer. But he noted that, that there were places where it was stuff, so that's another opportunity would be the things that we could do. Maybe it's cutting down some brush and sightlines, but what are the, some things we might be able to do to make things a little safer for bikes. Uh, you recognize that the, the problem about getting a, a dedicated bike lane, it would be an expensive proposition to expand the right way. But if there's anything we can do to make things a little safer for people uh, biking and sometimes walking on one forty-four.
I go down to the ferry landing when I have to take my boat in and out, and it's like, I'm hugging the road. Off as far as I can be when I hear a car coming, it's like, it's scary.
Pedestrians, bikes, any of that stuff.
Yeah.
All rolls back to what we was just talking about, all of it.
Yeah.
Roll back with the speed. These roads, uh, it would cost you millions and millions of dollars to make a dedicated bike lane down there.
I know that's been my, my goal forever. When I first moved here, it's like, let's have a bike.
I had, somebody asked me in a road committee meeting years ago, what would it take to have the D O T at least look at putting us? You know, twenty million dollars maybe? And she was blown away and it's like. You have this much room to work, you need a road, you need shoulders, you need ditches.
Yeah.
You put a six foot bike lane in there, you need more, you need to buy land.
Yeah.
You need to change every culvert on this road, you need to blast lead, you need to, it's endless.
Yep, yep. Never gonna happen. No, no, I gave that up finally.
I would rather see a dedicated bike. West Shore Road, East Shore Road. You know, people wanna come down here and bike, so I do know some people, I talked to a guy in Ashcombe, actually brings his bike down here and bikes down there. Bring it down to the back road.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it's safe to walk or bike on main road. I, no, don't do it. No, and I see people doing it and they're just like out in the road walking and I'm like. I see you, but you know.
There was a handful of cars at the time. And now, you know, I'm, you know, I'm a teen- young teenager.
Just too many curves and hills. Just going to the ferry lane, there is a huge, you know, that, that one little hill there, and that's where I have to walk and it's like, I'm just. Off, off the road completely, but also listening the whole time for. For any, any kind of noise so that I can get off the road.
Well, in case there's any millionaires listening, you need to do something with twenty million dollars.
There you go.
We are open to it.
I'll, I'll try to set something up in early November, uh, and I'll check in with the, through the road committee, but others, just to see if, what might be a good time.
I don't know, is it something you can get like late afternoon?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, yeah, don't, I'm not talking about detail, I'm talking about in the evening.
Other Monday nights, I have appointments.
Alright, anything on correspondence? Um, Lisa, Jeff? I didn't have anything for. Alright, let's go to admin items. Confirm the November meeting schedule. Uh, I just wanna bring up that we're going to, after this week, change our workshop. Day from Wednesday to Thursday from four to six. So that will change us.
Okay, would that be this week, the nineteenth?
No, 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 it will have our regular Wednesday meeting and then Thursday, uh, the following week it'll start.
The twenty-sixth.
Um, there's. Thanksgiving week in November, and I don't know if, if uh, people would like to take a week off. I say that because I might not be here. But, um. I think we can afford to do that, no? It, it's been pretty quiet, I thought it was very quiet today.
I, I think that, I, I'm fine. So if we, if we'd say in November that we're gonna do, uh. Cause we're, we're doing the rest of, the rest of October.
Right.
And, and so we do the sixth, the thirteenth, but not do the twenty.
Thank you.
Do the twenty-seventh after Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Do the fourth of, well, just keep on going, December, do the fourth of December, the eleventh. So that's a long hiatus of New Year. That's.
Well, just make sure everybody's gone and nobody's doing anything. I, I'll be here then. I can handle all the.
So I miss November because I was busy updating your workshop, sorry. So we're gonna definitely do, we're doing this.
Everything except. The twentieth.
The twentieth.
Yeah, the week of Thanksgiving.
Isn't there, oh, Veterans Day is the Friday?
Yeah, I think it's the Friday that, that.
Okay, so not the twenty-seventh, but.
Yeah.
Oh, the twentieth, not the twentieth.
Yeah. Alright. Uh, that one's done. Um, update on the, uh, election?
Yeah, I just wanted to get it into the record, um, kinda hoping Charlotte or someone would be here, but that, the absentee voting is underway. And uh, will be underway until November second. So people can come and vote in the town office while we're open, which is our new hours of. Tuesday, ten to six, Wednesday, ten to two, and Thursday, ten to two. Um, and then after the second, they'll have to come to the polls. Um, they can also request an absentee ballot sent to them by using an absentee ballot request form, which can be found online. You can do it over the phone by calling us, or you can do it by coming on in and filling it out here.
Alright, how about job licensing? Um, you had a suggestion for that.
Yeah, well, I've been looking into, um, like a mailer to every household, right? Because we want people to license their dogs. I think in the past, I'm not sure, but I think what we've done is we go after people who. Licensed in the past and encourage them to do it again, but there could be a whole other pool of dog owners. We don't know about that obligation or the timing or whatever. So I thought it might be good to just send something to everybody. Um, but that's a little expensive, I was looking into pricing and it's a pan about to die. And uh, Rose Wagner was giving me some advice, because they do the W C A newsletter, and I was like, why don't we just? Pay for some advertising space in the W C A newsletter? Which she was delighted with, because it would help save them money, but we get the word out to every household that way. And we could do it ongoing. Um, so not just the dog licensing, but everything else we have to remind people about every month, if you get those reminders. In paper form in addition to our e-newsletter. Um, so I think that was a kind of exciting opportunity.
Did she say how much it would cost?
She pitched fifty dollars, but she said something like a quarter of the newsletter, which seems like a lot to me, I wasn't. I was picturing like a little list of reminders and like see the website for more, I wasn't picturing like. Our own column or like taking up a lot of their newsletter, because I think it should be mostly community stuff. But I think a very abbreviated like list of reminders and how to get in touch with us. Just a standing like, maybe an eighth or something of a page, but I mean fifty bucks to. Reach everybody every single month doesn't sound like outrageous to me, but we could probably do less and. Pay a little less.
People like that newsletter, so it definitely is a way to, to get word out there. I, I like the idea, and hopefully she can give you a better price than fifty dollars.
Yeah, I thought the fifty was kind of a lot, but I love the idea.
Yeah.
It was for a lot of space.
Yeah, so like you said, I don't think we need that much, and you wanna take away from what good stuff she's putting in there.
That is the trouble, you notice it sometimes gets very, very fun.
Like a dedicated area, she could almost.
And mostly to refer them back to the website and say, hey, get our e-newsletter.
But, but something like, don't forget your dog license, all of you need to get your.
Right.
Dog's license.
What's your, do you have any idea how many people the uh, email newsletter goes out to? Yeah, exactly, how many? Three hundred and twenty-nine, I believe. That's pretty good.
Yeah, and it keeps growing. Yeah, it's probably one of the best ways that, that word is getting out.
That's the newsletter April sends out.
Yeah, the email. No, no, it's the one that, um, W C A sent out. Oh, I was talking about her email. How much?
The MailChimp email list is three hundred and twenty-nine. The, um, every door mailer that Rose does for the W C A is like five, no, six hundred something households. Reach a lot of people. That we're not reaching.
It, it goes pretty much all, all the mailboxes on, on this, this route.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I know, um, Mary Denzer has been adding people. Who are only here in the summers and it's like, well, they wanna get the, so it's like, good, so we keep building that. Um, so yeah. Talk to her and see if you couldn't get it for, um, less than fifty, but I'd like to make a motion that, um. We move forward with that idea and, um, see if you can't get a little bit cheaper. That was a long motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Alright, and all in favor? Alright, uh, anything else for admin items from any of you?
Um, I guess I could talk about in this place that Jeff and I went to, the uh, twenty twenty-four. Draft Budget Advisory Committee meeting on Friday. Um, and it was, it was pretty interesting. Um, I learned a lot, yeah. Um, Lincoln County, yeah. Budget advisory, yes, doesn't say county, Lincoln County, yes. Um, and uh, it was very informative, basically the budget's going up ten percent this year. Um, a big chunk of that increase is something called the E M A repeater, which is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, but what that's gonna provide is an ability for, um, each ambulance. Core to have their own radio so that they can communicate, because right now. If I understand the way they explained it correctly, if there's a, a ambulance maybe coming back from, uh. The hospital and another town's ambulance has been dispatched and. The other ambulance can ca- maybe catch that household, and that right now, they don't have a way to, to contact directly. So this would allow them to communicate, so much more efficient, um, response to emergencies.
And you said that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that?
Yeah. And it's a one-shot deal, but if you think about it, um, you know.
It, it could mean someone's life.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I get that, it just seems like a lot of money.
It is, it is, what isn't a lot of money nowadays, everything's, it's so expensive. Um, what else did I wanna say? Yeah, I, oh, uh, one of the other things that impressed me, I mean, the, the, the two that are, the two women that are kind of spearheading and presented this. Which was, uh, Carrie Kipper and, uh, who's the, um, county administrator. And then Michelle, um, Richardson, who's the finance director and also the elected treasurer. Are, are, are really making, um, lots of proactive, uh, measures, uh, for the county. One of the things that Michelle is working on is a spreadsheet of, uh, assets. And the replacement schedule, I think they're going out through twenty twenty-seven. And she's making an assessment of, of basically all the assets, um, in the county and the county's, um, assets. And then kind of making a schedule of replacements, so they're doing lots of proactive things. And, uh, yeah. It was interesting, and, uh, it was an interesting process. I don't know, is there anything else you wanna add, Jeff?
I think the biggest one, the, the increased, uh, cost in the budget is in personnel.
Well, yeah, yeah, people.
Yeah, and, uh, but we also learned that they budget for the worst case. So they have, they'll budget at what they'd have to pay somebody if, but most, much of the time. Uh, there isn't this same need for medical benefits, or, or they're not at the high end of the pay scale when they hire somebody. So, uh, it's not as bad as they, as, as it seems to us when we look at it. A, a ten percent increase is a pretty major jump. Um, but they had something similar last year, but they ended up by being able to use. The surplus by, you know, budgeting high, end of the year, you have money you can spend, well, that gets rolled in to the next year. So they're able to keep using that, that surplus to keep down costs. So, so not to think where our county assessment's gonna go up ten percent, it'll be some, it'll probably go up some, but.
And also their largest, uh, portion of their budget is, is basically the health and human services, which is like the sheriff's department. Is, is, is their largest chunk. So.
People are expensive.
Mm-hmm. We should be, we should be, we can't do the work without.
It'd be expensive.
Yep. All right, um, any other admin items?
Well, I have other legal businesses.
Okay, um, next, let's go to legal business, other legal business.
Okay, yeah, I wanted to to mention a few things uh that came out of the MMA convention. One of the things that I thought was significant is that the USDA Rural Development uh has funding for municipal infrastructure. So they have, they can make long-term loans, so it's not a grant, it's a loan, but uh going over forty years, we could do things. Like, and one of these from our comprehensive plan was uh to replace the fire department in this building, the town office. Uh, and uh so. Uh, the big stumbling block is it, you know, that's a, that's a huge amount of money to fund for a town our size, but if we spread out over forty years, it becomes more more feasible. Uh, and again, inter- inter- a low interest loan at the same time. So I did talk with Stacy, I'm not just in the fire, our chief, uh about, I mean, looking at it, you have the fire department working with the us, the town. Uh, and and just to start them, what are the ideas, what we want? So we're not no longer ready to go out for a grant, but for us to be able to grab on to some of the money, we just really have to come up with an idea, what is it we need to have? And what are some options, so that we could start, you know, start getting groundwork laid. Um, so I, what proposing uh i- is that we set up maybe a little ad hoc committee of of the of the fire department, represented from from the fire department and and from the select board to to talk about this.
Are they already feeling like they need a new place?
Absolutely, it's been, well, it hasn't been condemned exactly, but it's been, they had an engineering study done that found significant deficiencies. Uh, and and safety deficiencies.
Wow, it's not that.
You know, it it it, unfortunately, and and we have problems here with this building, as well as we know. The one thing is is that in our vault where our records are, is not um, it's a little of fire security. Um, that we'd want it to be, so uh then we got a bigger meeting room.
We've got problems in the women's bathroom, and, yep, yep.
So so again, these are buildings that were constructed uh fairly cost-effectively, with a lot of volunteer labor, a lot of effort going into the town, and the town could be proud. Of what we built, but it it's been thirty years or so, you know, it's time that we. Uh, build something that fits what we need today.
Twenty-five, twenty-eight.
This would be a hard sell till you get some roads in some better shape, because nobody's gonna go on to hook the three million dollars with roads like West Shore, not gonna happen. Uh, because you're probably looking at three to four million dollars. This building was the first step from going from Paul Hudson's kitchen to get a hunting license or to conduct town business. To a place where everything's together and.
Yep.
Hey, we had Virginia Anderson's office.
That's what I know, yes, yes, and she had her post-it notes.
That was her, but she owned that.
I know, you know.
Now with liability and stuff, you probably couldn't do that anymore.
Well, you could, towns do, there's lots of clerks that operate out of their households.
Is it?
Wow.
Yep.
My, that was a designated place that she ran her tax collector, treasurer, stuff out of.
Yep, some towns clerks do multiple towns, like in when you're way up north, and you get in little towns, you'll have a clerk to three, four towns.
I could see that.
It's just their house, that's their number, yeah.
But I bet they don't use just post-it notes.
Maybe, these are not sophisticated operations.
You had a monthly town registrations, and then your registration was due, she called me on today. But, you know what I mean, we went from that, going up to see Phyllis, one of Paul's tall drinks, to get a hunting license, turns into an hour and a half. Two, coming here, where everything was. And liability issues and whatnot and so forth. And not meeting down at the old town hall, have to heat that place up in the winter time for something, they did. And it was, it was a low budget. Pure progress at the time.
Yep.
Uh, same with the fire department, that was a concrete block building with an addition put on it for the school bus. And then they put the other addition on it. Unloved and that didn't cost a whole lot more than this did.
Yeah, yeah. All right, okay, go ahead.
Okay. Code enforcement, uh, there was a session talking about uh code enforcement. Much, again, for for the larger communities, any community over or over four thousand people, asked to enforce the uniform building code. Uh, we don't, because we're smaller. And so some discussion about that, that's not, it's a new news, what was interesting was that uh in getting into talking about inspections, how to get inspection stuff. Uh, they, some towns are using third parties. Uh, people who can come in and inspect work, maybe they they're someone who does like a building appraisal. Uh, so they're not, so the code enforcement officers, they can, they can be uh commissioned in a sense to to do uh an inspection.
They're trained.
They're trained to recognize it.
Yep, kind of what what Mary was talking about, you know, that would serve that purpose.
That's right, so I mean, to Mary's point, there's a concern about overwhelming code enforcement, well, there there is an option that we can we can explore as we as we move into doing inspections.
Good. It's finding the people, as you said, yeah, now who's available.
And then other points that kind of interesting was that uh there are. Opportunities for for fellowships or or funded volunteers. Uh, there's something called the Maine Volunteer Fellows, so it's kind of like the Volunteers of America.
Just that.
The kind of, yeah, uh, that the state pays for, um, and it's a year-long uh employment for for a volunteer. Uh, another one is that the uh for public policy students, the Margaret J. Smith Center. Uh, they'll also have students who need projects, uh, and so towns can give them a project to work on. This case is something that's shorter term, and that's something that they can do in weeks, you know, in most months. But uh point is that there's uh the, I mean, the opportunity, if we have a a need for for research or a project where we wanna get something done. If we could package up as the possibility of being able to get a a fellow, or again, a possibility that a grad student in public policy could could take um some research for us. So I thought that was useful. Uh, and just in general about the uh the MMA uh convention, uh, I'd like to suggest that next year. Uh, the select board can consider, uh, if the town office staff wanna go, that that uh that be made a a a opportunity. Uh, there are many uh town clerks, town treasurers, uh road commissioners, uh code enforcement officers who were in attendance. And there's a whole uh. Segment of meetings associated with public works. That uh could be useful in terms of working and getting some ideas.
That's another subject in this fire department, town office, few working down the road is, that may be something you wanna incorporate into that as a public work. I know it sounds a little crass.
Nope, nothing does.
Newcastle looked at this a few years back. And. It seems far as that, but when you get right down to the brass tacks, I mean, it's really not that far out. I would round after initial investment. Nothing I would completely block out in the future.
Oh, we've got our um town shed right here.
Right, well. Part of it is because people don't wanna wait till next week, they want it done right now. And they want somebody that's there all the time, the only way you're ever gonna get that is the Public Works Department. And they looked at it, and they realized, you know, people say, well, that's crazy. Well, when you stop and think about it, on the outside, it does look crazy, but when you get down to doing the numbers. Uh, you're taking the profit margin out of the picture, you're taking taxes out of the picture, you're taking a lot of expenses. The contractors have to pay, the town doesn't, and it brings that number down. You know, other than the initial startup, but it's not something. The way the current society is going, it's something that will happen here, even on the silent eventually. You'll have one or two people year-round, you'll have somebody else, the third guy part-time, or. Because you gotta have Public Works Department, they're obviously gonna plow the road. Just all things to, you know, if you're walking down the road, you gotta look at all. You don't wanna be set on this and say, well, geez, you know, we should have done this when we done that.
Or look at this is the way it's always been done, because things change, things need to change sometimes. Yep, anything else, Jeff?
There was one more. Oh, the uh reassessment, the two thousand twenty-five.
Revaluation.
Uh, revaluation, uh, that also learned that we. Need to get hot on on planning that, and hopefully getting that uh out to bid. Uh, as an effort, uh, they, we're in that window of lead time, where it's necessary to get it going. And we don't know yet how difficult it's gonna be to find someone to do that work. So just putting that on the record is one of the things that we need to work to, on as a board.
Is there a lot of outfits to do that kind of stuff?
Not as many as it used to be, fair enough, and and they've gotten more. The town in the past used a a single individual to do it, the difficulty is being able to do that well these days, and given the complexity of our properties now.
Yeah, was that Huskins?
It was Huskins, yeah, Huskins actually did the last two.
You're on O'Connell, don't go on any more.
I think O'Connell still does, there are a number of outfits, some of them coming from out of state that do it. Uh, but one that we did, I did get a list of uh potential people, and it's not a to town, gotta reach out and and see. Uh, a little more, a little bit more about them. I also did talk with uh a a town manager, uh, one town who's who's done several, and talked about the ins and outs of how to line somebody up and how to manage the project. Uh, so starting to get some some input.
Now, any idea how much time and looking at these properties, the select board have to. Have to invest?
Me, us, i- as people?
Yeah, I mean, does the assessor just go out on his own, or does he accompany by a selectman when he does his actual onsite visits?
Depends on how they do it, I think by and large, the the select board doesn't go out on this, this is again where they have to get every every property. Yeah, yeah, and that's the thing, it's just because you don't want any coloration.
Yeah, yeah.
Makes sense.
And it's also why you don't have somebody associated with the town do it, uh, but uh. But it's all, and it's also going inside every house, or at least that's the objective.
Right.
So you have a a pretty fair appraisal of of the quality of of the properties, not just a square footage.
And and you had a number, what was it, four hundred dollars per house or something like that?
Well, that was the last, that was actually two thousand and four.
Right, but just to give an idea of what it what it was even at that time, per house.
No.
Guaranteed, any four hundred miles to go.
No, be at least double that.
It was forty dollars.
Forty-five.
Forty, forty, forty and forty-five.
Some number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Four is probably now what it is, right?
But but, yeah, we, this is gonna be an expensive process.
Gotta do it, yeah. All right, anything else on other legal business? Nope. All right, so I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn, do I have a second?
Second, second, all in favor.
Night, everybody.